Welcome, everyone. I think yes.
Mine shows no audio, so.
Okay, that's good. All right. All right, it's five o'clock and welcome, everyone. This is CIO Township Planning Commission. We're having a workshop this evening. And with that, Commissioner Walsh, really, call roll.
Roll call the Commissioners. Brandt.
Here.
Colbertson.
Here.
Kendall.
Here.
Walsh here. Hyde here. Note that Butcher and Moore are not present in Township Hall at the moment.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Brandt? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving forward with the agenda as posted. And everyone, you'll note, we have some folks online. You came in muted. And this is set up as a meeting, so when we move into a discussion, I know we have several trustees attending. And here comes Commissioner Moore. And so we hope that, you know, we can have sort of a moderated discussion, if you will. And that's why it's set up as a meeting. So I'll take it that everyone will remain muted until we get to that discussion or our public comment. So with that, I'd like to welcome Wendy Ramsen.
Thank you.
And you could go ahead and introduce yourself and then you can take it away.
Sure. My name is Wendy Ramsen. I work for the Michigan Association of Planning, which is the state chapter of the American Planning Association. It is an organization that represents not just professional planners, but also citizen planners like you all. And CIO Township is a group member of MAPS, so you get our publications, you get information from us. One of the things that we do as well is that we provide training. And so this workshop that I'm providing this evening is some training that was commissioned originally by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Upper Peninsula. So, but it is very translatable to any place. And we've customized it a little bit for your situation. My background is that I worked for years in the city of Ann Arbor. Let's just say several decades for the city of Ann Arbor in a variety of roles, zoning administration, systems planning, and ultimately as the planning manager before I went to MAPS. So I have a good bit of practical, local unit of government experience.
And I just want to check in with the folks that are online to make sure that you can hear Wendy adequately. If somebody wants to unmute and just confirm.
We can hear you just fine.
Thank you very much.
Great. Perfect. Hey, let's get started. Maybe. It worked before. There we go. So I just mentioned about some background about the Michigan Association of Planning. We provide a lot of information out for, in addition to the workshops, you get monthly magazines or bimonthly magazines with updates. Most recently, we had one on law. I provided Jan with a couple of workbooks that come along with this training. So she's going to put those in your library over there. There are other publications that we provide, including a Planning Commission Toolkit. If you're new to the Planning Commission, that might be something that you would like to purchase. And then a copy of the presentation slides, I think you emailed to folks. So you have that. And you have that green sheet, astro-green sheet, yes, right there. So if you would please know comments as we go along, if you have any suggestions, we use those very much to make sure that our workshops are hitting the right mark. All right, so the agenda today is to talk about getting the development you want. And so what that involves is a foundation of your master plan, a framework of your zoning ordinance, and a process, this development review process that is kind of at that local scale to implement all of these things. And then I'll talk a little bit about public comment and being development-ready. So I'll start out with this quote, "The first secret of getting what you want is knowing what you want." And formalizing it in your master plan and zoning. So I'm, you know, we're not really in a great situation for discussion, but I will close that to you all. What do you want? What do you want?
We can talk about things we don't want.
I'm asking you what you do want.
I know. Well, we don't want the drive-throughs.
She answered her question.
Which means.
I think we want a thriving corridor.
Okay.
Jackson Road.
All right.
That is mixed-use with commercial, residential, pedestrian, bike paths. And I was just thinking about this today because I looked at your slides. And one of the things that I think we've lost over the last couple of years is entertainment. We lost the theater.
Oh, yeah.
We lost a bowling game.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we have, we're fortunate, we have a lot of physical fitness stuff going on in the township. I was thinking about some sorts of entertainment actually.
That's a great observation because, you know, sometimes you look to the past for things that are missing. Sometimes you look to the future for uses that you've never had and want to bring in. Great point.
We'd like to keep the way our township feels in the rural areas, as well as having the corridor that has more urban-type and business-type environments. So we have both extremes that we'd like to see through to the future, but keeping both.
Okay, which is challenging, right? You know that as development, development patterns are typically this kind of ring where it goes out from development and wants to expand beyond that. So, yeah, good point. And one of the things that, when you talk about rural character, is how do you define that? Because some places define rural character as rural residential, which are large lots. Some actually define it as being rural in the sense of you have agriculture, you have, you know, different types of use that may not be compatible with residential. So, you know, as you think about it, you know, think about how you might describe that. And I saw, Jan, someone raised their hand. I thought it flashed across my screen.
Oh, yeah. Rob, go ahead.
I beg your pardon for interrupting. We have a new system here with the dais and the microphones on it. I'm able to hear the speaker very clearly, but the people on the dais are a little bit muffled. So either the microphones aren't on, or you need to speak up so the ceiling microphone picks it up.
It was on, but can you hear this better, Rob?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I wasn't talking to the microphone before.
Okay, when you do speak, please bring the microphones closer and that will help greatly. There, we can hear you, Kim. It was difficult to hear Kim before. Thank you, and I apologize for breaking in.
But thank you. That's all important.
That's very relevant. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? Yeah.
I think one thing we have to recognize is that our corridor that we're looking to develop divides the township in half. And to a certain extent, whether we develop or not, we have the interstate actually as a barrier that separates north and south.
Yeah, just to build on that, I think what I really enjoy about CIO and makes, I think it makes it special is if you look at the transect and the Jackson Road is kind of a, you know, goes from the Ann Arbor urban all the way to rural, I mean, actual agricultural rural. And then when you go south, we have the majority, the highest density is really in our southeast. And again, it goes rural. And then, but we have that huge barrier of 94 and Jackson Road to get to some of the, you know, recreational resources along the river and the border-to-border. So, I mean, some really interesting geography and diversity. I mean, how many other places can you, you know, we have multitude of plentiful farms that, you know, are actually growing things that you can, you know, you can purchase. And, you know, you can bike to, you can bike for miles and have a diverse, you know, ecosystems and so forth. So it's, so that to me is something to really cherish in the township, right?
Well, you're well on your way to starting the first steps of your master plan update, then. So to set the stage for development, you start by identifying your community values, like you just did. You know, you articulated a lot here. And so, you know, once you're able to do that, you're able to, and I did not get a chance to look at your current master plan, but I understand that you will be doing, at least looking at your current master plan in the next year. So as you're looking, yes, it is, it is a lot of work. But, you know, if that master plan is not reflecting the ideas that you and the elected officials and the public really want, then, you know, that is something that can cause conflict down the line. So the process typically is that you go through a master planning process, you identify your community values, then you codify those in the form of zoning regulations. Maybe there are some other regulations that go along with that to implement the master plan. And then you develop your ground rules for your development review. So you've got your codes, but you also have your standards that you use to review development. So each of these steps, I'm going to really reinforce, will have some aspect of community engagement, which is tough, but it is something that can be very helpful to you in the process. So it's the not-so-secret sauce. There are a number of reasons why that I've put on this slide here, and I'd be curious to hear what yours are, what your ideas are. But it aligns government with the constituents, which you, as a representative of your community, want to see happen. It allows for that bottom-up grassroots type of information. But it also allows for the community to understand what you do, which is really important because a lot of people have no idea how development really happens and who reviews. So having that and incorporating it into your processes would be wise. And then it generates documentation that supports the action of you on the township board, right, Kathleen and others that have to ultimately make these hard decisions. You're giving them a platform and a reasoning for their decisions. So it goes without saying, you have to conduct this with respect and integrity in order to be trusted. And then it can be dominated by a representative group. And so part of the challenge is making sure that you're hearing all the voices that care to participate in the process. So the process to do this, to get the development you want, I would argue requires you to understand those intersections between planning, zoning, and development review. They tend to be looked at as separate buckets, but really they are all one process. Communicating those intersections to the public so they understand as well. And then fostering that respect and trust and transparency. You're already pretty transparent with your website and, you know, your materials, but not everyone is keyed into that. So how do you make sure that other people in the township know what's going on? And then making sure that they know how they can engage in the process. And of course, it's a political environment. You know, the people who are on the township board are elected officials. You are appointed officials on the Planning Commission. But understanding that so that not everyone's going to agree with your decisions, you're going to probably have to make some hard decisions. We talked a little bit about what's happening in Ann Arbor right now. That's all very, going to be very political. And both the Planning Commission and the City Council there are going to have to make some hard decisions before that plan is adopted. But if things are done transparently and fairly, hopefully that will set the stage for a development that follows. So we start out with the foundation, as I mentioned, is your master plan. And I'm going to do a little bit of review, so bear with me. A master plan is a statement of policy describing the desired physical development of the community. Now, master plans sometimes stray, I shouldn't say stray, sometimes take on economic development or other more policy-based approaches. But it really is meant to be looking at physical development, transportation, housing, green space preservation. So those are all physical aspects of your community. And if you think about it as kind of, an example here is the top of the puzzle box. It is what, you know, what guides all the little pieces that have to go in place to make it all fit. So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act is what guides planning and has a lot to say about the master plan. Just as a point of reminder, it allows you, as the Planning Commission, to create and adopt master plans. It also allows for the elected board to adopt master plans. I'm not sure how you have it set up here, but there are options that are allowed in the MPEA. It allows you to make recommendations to adopt and amend the zoning code. You yourself can change the zoning code, but you can make recommendations. It tasks the Planning Commission with developing capital improvements plans, and we could have a whole separate discussion about that if you ever want to talk about it.
We don't have that in our, with the trustees, yeah.
Is there a resolution to that effect? Okay, all right. Is there any involvement with the Planning Commission in the CIP?
Not really.
Okay, best practices, even if the governing board is responsible for the CIP, that the Planning Commission should be involved. Because the capital improvements plan is a way to implement some recommendations in your master plan. And that's why the state statute actually says that the Planning Commission shall do this unless there is this resolution to have someone else do it. So best practice would be to be involved at some stage of that process. You are required, as a Planning Commission, to review the master plan every five years. It doesn't mean you have to update it. It just means that you have to take a look at it. But there are probably good reasons in this day and age to make changes every five years. You're required to prepare an annual Planning Commission report that talks, and I'll talk a little bit later about how you can use that report, maybe a little differently than you might have in the past. You're also tasked under the MPA to approve public improvements. I think most communities do not do that, but technically, if you have a park or a street or other infrastructure, you are supposed to review and improve it. We can talk about that at another time. And you also have the ability to create subdivision regulations and reviews. By subdivision regulations, essentially, it's your development regulations and the review process. So a master plan has three basic components. It talks about what you have in the form of demographics, background studies, maybe an economic analysis. Or now, there's a requirement through the MPA EA as a last fall to have some type of housing element in your master plan. It also wants to know, or also includes what you want. And that's where those values come in, and your intended physical development in the future. So that could be your goals and objectives. It's likely going to include your future land use plan. And then how you get there. So recommendations of how you implement all of your goals and objectives. It will include likely your zoning plan, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So I'm stepping aside a little bit to talk about a model that you can think about in terms of how to create a master plan or update a master plan is that there's a Stanford article from 2011 talking about collective impact. Excuse me, I'm going to, it's spring allergy season, so. When I start talking, I start coughing. This model says that there are five components that make collective impact successful. One is a common agenda. Another is shared data and measurement, mutually reinforcing activities. So, you know, people are working together, essentially, open and continuous communication, and a backbone-ordinating organization. So they posit that this is one way to go about having an impact as a group. They also, the article talks about, you know, typically, when you don't have some of these things in place, when you have, you know, maybe you're well-prepared to come to a meeting, but others aren't, or you're all talking in cross purposes, it's that first disorder and confusion. You really aren't making any progress. Then maybe people get on board, you all, you know, know your bylaws, you know the standards of the zoning ordinance, you know what the master plan says, but you all have your independent thing, you know, rural, you know, commercial, whatever. You're kind of all dissipating that energy. And again, that can be something that can be really frustrating to group discussion. But then, maybe with more discussion and looking at these elements of that collective impact, you start coordinating and start working together and understanding points of view, and, you know, you're moving forward. And this model would posit that really what you're aiming for, though, is that collective impact where you look at wicked problems that are very difficult to solve, and you be strategic about how you move forward. You don't just list out a set of activities, yeah, we're going to do this, this, and this. You start thinking about, well, first we'll do this, and this will, you know, help with the walkability of this corridor, which will lead to this, which will lead to grants. So really, it's being that strategic thinking, which is very hard for a group of volunteers who meet, maybe, what, do you meet every two weeks, every month? Every two weeks? But, so, you know, I would say that maybe that would be a way to think about how to approach the master plan. This is a slide that we took from our training. On the left are the things that we say you should do if you're doing a master plan, and then kind of linked up with this collective impact model. So establishing a vision for the community is that common agenda for change. Identify existing conditions as a part of a master plan would be that shared data and measurement. So, you know, how many times have people argued about data? And, you know, that's not true, that's not true. So having that shared data and measurement or some, you know, as a base is really important. Promote cooperation between stakeholders, so we talk about this a lot in planning. So how do we get people to buy into the process, to trust the process, and, you know, really listen to each other? So that's that mutually reinforcing activities, the types of things that you do to help with that. And then communicate goals, priorities, and intended actions. That's that open and continuous communication. And then the last piece for a master plan is to guide long-range development of a community. In this case, we had said for 20 years. You could say 10, you could say 25. But that, other than the collective impact model, is that backbone, that coordination backbone. Kind of all are looking out to that, that point.
So, can I just?
Yes, certainly.
So one of the things that I've noticed since being on the Planning Commission is that continuity is important. I'm sorry, one of the things I've noticed since being on the Planning Commission, thank you, the, is the continuity is important. But administrations change, people move on, they have different things going on in their personal lives. So I'm just wondering, how do you, how do you create that backbone in a changing stakeholder environment?
I'll talk about it a little bit later, but just in general, what you do is keep it in mind's eye. So as new residents come in, you know, they see that the, you know, the next door has something about, oh, the master plan said this and this, or, oh, you know, I heard from my neighbor that we got this Jackson Road grant, and, you know. So just trying to keep it in the public eye, which requires some effort on the part of maybe staff, maybe the commission itself, and talking to your neighbors and talking to your influence groups, maybe people at work, is keeping it in the mind's eye. Because the typical thing that happens with master plans is it's a big, big conversation. And then it all, it'll get approved, and maybe there's a little bit of follow-up from that, and then it dies down. And the people that work on it are like, oh, yeah, I know this is what we want to do. But the rest of the world, you know, maybe just moved in, or they hadn't heard anything about what might be happening. And people make stuff up when they don't know what's going on, right? So, you know, that's, that's one thing that continuity, that you can do for continuity. Certainly, if you could keep some Planning Commission members in a way that staggers knowledge base so that you don't all, you're not all starting at once, but that often is very difficult to do. Does that give you some thought about ideas? All right, we'll talk some more about that. So the community engagement process in general is very similar to what we were just talking about. You know, starting out by having people understand what the demographics are. You start building, hopefully you're not starting from scratch, but you are relying on those durable community relationships, work, home, within the government itself. You start looking at those demographics and listening to what people have to say to understand what the community wants, for one thing, and what they need, which could be different. Because everyone wants to have a small, bucolic, quiet place. But, you know, you know how property taxes work. There are lots of services that you need to provide. So how do you start to balance those and communicate with the public? You try to get as broad of a representation as possible. So, you know, typically, people who own their own homes have a vested interest in that investment. They will act on that perhaps more than people who are renters and don't have that financial investment. But then again, renters are residents too with their needs and wants. People who, you know, may not have the wherewithal to attend meetings, either the time or the ability because of childcare or whatever. So, you know, thinking about how do you get to those voices so that you can bring them into the mix. Part of that is this number five, use the community-preferred engagement techniques. So maybe it isn't meetings. This is maybe a good kind of in-between where you have a meeting that's, you know, online so people can, at their leisure, plug in. But if it's not recorded, if they can't fit this in this timeframe, then they're still a point missing. So, you know, thinking about those types of aspects, the technical aspects. And then making sure that as you listen to people, that you document their feedback and talk about how that impacted, or maybe how you couldn't do what they wanted and why. And document that so that they have some point of reference. The worst thing is when you go and ask for people's opinion, and then you don't report back to them because then they're like, hey, I told you this. So, you know, thinking about how you're going to loop back and let them know how that affected your decisions.
Wendy, I think one of the things CIO struggles with is outreach. And if you have tips on that?
Yeah, I mean. Let me think on that, that we, I have a section on community engagement. So by the time I get there, maybe I'll have better, you know, thoughts about that. So the Michigan Economic Development Commission, you may or may not know, has something called redevelopment-ready communities. And it's a process where they work with the community to go through steps so that you're doing all the things right, if you want development and the type of development you want. This checklist I pulled because I thought it was really helpful. Here are some things that, you know, to think about. Does a plan identify needed development in residential, commercial, industrial, entertainment? Are the recommendations supported by the data? So, you know, maybe you think you need more retail, but you do some research and find out retail is changing a lot. And really, there isn't that much need for retail space. Just kind of a dilemma a lot of communities are dealing with right now. And was a community asked about their needs and preferences, so housing type and affordability? So you may hear from people, oh, yeah, we just want single-family homes. But then if you talk to someone who has someone, a child with a developmental disability, they may say, I really want to be able to have a place within my single-family home where they could have their own space, which, you know, in planning terms, is a. Single family home where they could have their own space, which you know, in planning terms is an accessory dwelling unit. So you know. Try to get beyond the buzz, the words and really get to what people are saying. So. Uh, the master plan should reflect the community's desired direction for the future, priority redevelopment areas. Or maybe preservation areas in your case. Um, and it should address land use and infrastructure. And I know that um, sewer water issues are a key piece for you. So. It would make sense for you to address that right in the master plan. Not all communities do that. They maybe leave it to the engineers to do a separate plan. But I think in your case, it would be helpful to talk about that. And then within the um, master plan, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires you to do a zoning plan. So typically, uh, zoning plan may be overlaid on a future land use plan, or maybe there's separate maps. Um, the map here that's very busy on the right is a zoning plan with little call out boxes about where. Uh, zoning would need to be changed based on the recommendations in the master plan. So. Um, this process and going through this process of looking at your existing map and where your recommendations are. Helps you identify some inconsistencies, maybe, maybe. You know, you want entertainment in this quarter, but you have some zoning restrictions that would prevent the type of entertainment that you hope to. Hope to draw. And so you would call that out potentially either here, if it's a map type of issue or in the text. Um, for a change to the zoning ordinance. So the rest, the way I have this set up is in each of these sections, there's um, a bunch of smart practice slides. Uh, I didn't want to say best prac- practice because I don't intend that these are the best practices, but I think it's smart to do some of these things. So the first one I have is don't be an island. Um, you have articulated a lot of things that you want to do for Sio and Sio is a charter township, has a lot of land area. But it sits within a region. So Ann Arbor on the east, you're not a charter township. Okay, all right. Not yet, okay.
He's like, that.
Went up at one point in time. I know, I remember hearing that, okay. Okay, so, but you know, Ann Arbor on the east, definitely urban in the context of the county. Uh, on the west, you have smaller uh, communities Dexter, Chelsea, um, you know, Celine to the south. So you know, thinking about where you sit within this region, um, you know. Do you, have you looked at the plans of these other communities? Do you know what they say when they butt up against Sio? Uh, are you in points of agreement? Is there conflict? Um, are there opportunities for collaboration and particularly in the area of uh, non-motorized transportation? I use as an example, I'm familiar with um, Ann Arbor and Pittsfield Township have done a lot in terms of. Communicating where infrastructure changes are going to be made to extend pathways and you know, over freeways and things like that. So. Um, those types of things make a lot of sense to collaborate on. And then also I'd say look into potential trends or any regulation changes that may be coming up. Uh, in the planning world, we are talking a lot about AI and how that affects. Um, us just in terms of information flow, but also in terms of technology and needed. Data centers and you know, space to run these huge, huge servers. And where will they be? Will they like to go to, you know, open pieces of land and you know, that are served by electricity, but don't necessarily need a lot else. And so are they going to be looking at farmland, solar, renewable, all of these, you know, the solar farms that were recently regulated. By the Michigan Legislature, you know, thinking ahead to the extent that you can. Uh, about these future uses and how they may or may not fit within your community. Another smart practice is making sure that you keep your master plan relevant. Um. Even though you're only required to look at it every five years, you know, we really think it's a good idea to um, explore yearly. Maybe you set up a regular meeting, um, you know. At the end of the calendar year or the end of the fiscal year where you talk to the community, say, hey, you know, is there anything about the master plan that you think should be changed? Or the zoning ordinance? Make sure you refresh your data at various points. So you know, after COVID is a good example, a lot of communities, you know, changed. Um, retail changed, uh, population, um, you know, maybe more renters, fewer owners. Uh, you know, so take a look at that because that may behoove you to look at your master plan to see if things need to be changed. In terms of your land use recommendations. And here, this is what we were talking about a little bit earlier, um, communicate your plan. So uh, when you communicate it, try to, to the extent that you can, talk about how your plan recommendations. Connect to your zoning and what is a zoning ordinance and you know, how, how does that all work? Maybe doing a little bit of general education. Um, another thing that you can do is take uh, current projects or recent projects. And show how that happened as a result and taking it all the way back to the master plan. So you know, this current residential development, it was zoned this way because this is the zoning designation. Our master plan calls for, you know, lower density residential in these areas with these provisos. So it could be a little tricky if people don't like the development. So. But it does start to demystify the process. Um, you can make presentations at local organizations. You've got Kiwanis, you've got, you know, organizations that are always looking for speakers. So if anyone wants to try that out, you know, you could go to uh, fraternal organization or whatever, the Boy Scouts. Actually, um, I just did a presentation um, earlier this winter with the Girl Scouts as a way to let these. Teenagers know how this process works. It's not just your retirees. It's not just your, your homeowners. I mean, it really is looking at the different groups that are in your community. You can share your planning commission reports with the council. I don't know how much communication right now goes back and forth. Um, some communities have annual meetings where the planning commission and the council meet together and talk about issues. Uh, and you can, you know, if someone is really creative, maybe there's someone uh, at the township that's doing social media. Um, to have them do a blog post every nun- now and then about what the master plan says, you know, kind of a running question. So there's some ideas. Okay, questions and comments about the master plan? Anything? Okay. Moving on to the framework for this process, which is your zoning. So by a way of um, review. The zoning ordinance is adopted by local government and it regulates development of land. Uses activities and structures. So it's a very distinct role. And that role is defined by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Uh, interestingly, it says in the act very clearly that the zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan. So there is that connection again. Um, you know, the two work together and sometimes people get confused and they just talk about the plan. Being the zoning, which it isn't, so you have to kind of clear that up. Uh, but it really is designed to promote health, safety and welfare. And the list I have here is everything that's in the statute. So some of it is, you know, pretty vague improper use of land. Well, in, in whose opinion, what is improper use of land? I, I think. That could vary. Um, but it gives you and the, the elected officials an opportunity to say, we have. Thought about this and these, this is the proper use of land in our community. This is how we're going to zone. Here's how we're going to conserve natural resources um, within the law because you certainly have constitutional. Limitations on regulation of private land uh, that you know, preclude you from taking land without just compensation. But it gives you a lot of latitude to conserve land uh, in other ways. Avoid the overcrowding of population, which is an interesting one. That hearkens back to the um, to the tenements in New York. Um, so it's kind of archaic language that gets debated a lot. But providing transportation systems and networks is within the ability of the zoning enabling act. Reducing hazards to life and properties. So that could be setbacks or height restrictions based on fire codes um, or fire equipment that you have. And then facilitate adequate public utilities and services, which is at top of mind for you all. So some basics, zoning has to be based on a plan. I mentioned that. Zoning runs with the land. So you may have run into this in your discussions before you. Someone may say, well, if you approve this, you know, what happens if someone buys it? Well. The person that buys it gets that approval. It goes with the land. Um, zoning decisions are permanent unless of course you, someone comes along and decides to request a uh, amendment. To the zoning ordinance or to the zoning map. And then you can however, provide a date of expiration for segments. So.
For what?
For site plans or development proposals. So the zoning itself, the under, what we call underlying zoning has to stay in place until someone. Who has that authority, the elected board uh, goes and changes it. But if someone gets, um, let's say they get a hotel. Site plan approved by the township board, they have to construct that within a certain amount of time or else it lapses.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah. So the content of zoning ordinances falls basically into these categories or buckets. Um, the zoning districts article uh, includes usually a purpose statement um, and or an intent statement. This is something that isn't a regulation, but it helps you determine if, for instance, if you're rezoning. A piece of land to a new zoning district, it helps you decide if it's a good fit. Uh, it also lists permitted uses, um, any special uses, any accessory uses, and sometimes it will list prohibited uses. It will have a whole lot of dimensional requirements. So these are um, height setbacks, amount of area, minimum open space. Um, lot size for land divisions. So that is a, a very large component of a zoning ordinance. And then it will typically have site development standards. Um, sometimes some communities put that in a separate ordinance and I don't want to get into all the nuances of that, but. You can have that in your zoning ordinance that have the process for a site for a developer view. You know, where uh, what needs to be shown on a site plan, you know, things of that nature. So I mentioned that sometimes there are codes that are outside of the zoning ordinance that relate. Here's a list of um, development regulations and standards that may or may not be in your zoning ordinance. So land divisions is a big one. Um, you have the authority to regulate land divisions. Uh, if you don't, then there is a state act, land division act. That says how many splits can be made, um, or how uh, plats can be developed, although no one does plats anymore, I don't think. Stormwater management can be in a separate code, you know, if you require for any impervious being added on a site that they retain on site or detain on site. Um, maybe uh, if someone is putting in a subdivision and they're putting in public streets, which I don't know. Probably not. Do you have any that come in with public streets or only private streets?
But they're required to do the stormwater.
Yeah, so, so substitute instead of public street design, you'd have private street design. Um, that would be something either in the zoning ordinance or a separate ordinance. So um. Historic districts, uh, sign codes, utilities, all of these have some uh, bearing on development. And may or may not be in the zoning ordinance, but are typically things that you need to know about. So smart practice for zoning. Align your zoning with the master plan and that sounds simple. It really isn't unless you draw air holes all over everything. It's like, oh, this comes from this, this comes from that. Um, you can do this. Uh, another way of communicating this is as a part of your annual report. So you could talk then about. How you've uh, made progress on implementing certain recommendations in the master plan. Maybe there was a work plan that was developed as a part of the master plan. You could chronicle rezoning requests because rezoning requests typically, if they're approved, indicate that there's something that's. Um, changing in your community. So if you're approving um, maybe increased density in certain areas. Maybe if you look at your master plan, this is something that you need to look in the future of increasing density. If there are ZBA variances, uh, maybe people have been coming in because they want to add front porches onto their. House that was built in the fifties, it doesn't have a front porch. Maybe you start thinking, okay, maybe we tweak the zoning ordinance to allow open. Porches in the front open space because we think that's okay. And they shouldn't have to go to ZBA for each of those requests. Your staff will have observations about what might be happening in the community and what changes might be going on, maybe out in the larger world. Um, controversial projects, I'm sure you all internalize as a part of your job, but you know, kind of taking those apart to see. Um, what might be, what you might learn from those and then of course lawsuits. So if a lawsuit um, is filed and the uh, person who files the suit prevails. Then that is probably a message that you need to do something in the master plan, either to bolster your zoning ordinance, to get what you want or change your zoning ordinance. Go along with what the lawsuit findings were. So um, zoning ordinances have shelf lives. So think for one moment about pinball parlors. So uh, there are many zoning ordinances throughout the country that still have requirements for pinball parlors, which you know. We still have pinball peeps for a while, um, in Ann Arbor, but um, you know, for the most part. For the most part, um, there are uses that just become outdated. So when you think about that, look at your zoning ordinance, um, and think about, do you need text amendments? There are two ways to do amendments to the zoning ordinance, a text amendment uh, or a map amendment. So some of these, like the pinball parlor might be a text amendment. Uh, maybe you're adding clarifying language because people keep coming to you and saying, but the code says I can do this. And you say, no, you can't do that. And maybe we need to change the language to um, make sure that's the case. You may want to change procedures and requirements. I understand that you look at preliminary site plans, but you don't look at final site plans at planning commission. Um, one, you know, I'm sorry if I don't want to raise anybody's uh, tackles here, but um, the. The state of art right now is that the elected body should not do final approval of site plans, that that should either be the planning commission or a staff role. So that, you know, if you're talking about text amendments, that would be something that would be um, need to be articulated in a text amendment. A map amendment is just that, you're adding, uh, you're expanding a zoning district one way or the other. Maybe you're making it larger, maybe you're making it smaller. Um, or maybe you created a brand new district. Uh, and you want to put it in a place, in place of an older district. Um, so those are map amendments. And then a good practice is, I'm looking at Jan here, um, define acceptable design. So you know, zoning ordinance is pretty good about um, constraining scale. So you know, height setbacks, placement. Um, what a zoning ordinance doesn't usually do is uh, talk about aesthetic standards. And so um, there are tools out there that you can use in a zoning ordinance to uh, define aesthetic standards. Maybe it is um, a set of design guidelines that are applied to a building. You can, um, there's something called form-based code, which is a zoning ordinance that um, articulates what. A form should be, maybe you know, windows at a certain point, doors at a certain point. So it gets into much more than just the shape of the building.
We get that with our Jackson Road overlay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so you have an example already. And so one of the things that you want to do though is um. You want to give enough wiggle room, as it says right here, for peop- for designers to be creative. But then again, you don't necessarily want this basket. I don't know, it might be a tourist drop. Um, but uh. One thing you want to do is that you do want to say in your master plan, you know, this is, for instance, a Jackson Road corridor is, you know. Um, characterized by, you know, uh, a green setback, uh, you know. Buildings that, I don't know, maybe it says brick or you know, has a, you know, something other than. Um, aluminum siding is, you know, there are ways to say it and ways to develop design guidelines that if you feel that that's something that's important. Uh, you can incorporate into your zoning ordinance. I will say um, in Ann Arbor, we have a um. We have design guidelines for the downtown, which are what, fifty pages long? They're really long. And so uh, there is a move right now to um, get rid of. The design review process, the design review board, because um, city council feels that it's hampering. Uh, the, the development review process. It adds too much time and isn't really resulting in what they want it to result in. So that's something to keep in mind in any type of design review. A lot of times it's advisory and if the developers don't listen to it, then. You know, it's kind of a waste of everyone's time. Okay, so what comments or questions on the zoning ordinance?
I have a a question because we've been working on this a little bit too is um so. We passed a resolution uh around carbon neutrality and achieving.
The planning commission has?
That, yeah. Well, no, the board of trustees have.
Oh, okay.
Recommended it too.
Yeah, we recommend, we, yeah, recommended it, and um we do talk about some of that in our master plan. Um and yet, you know, we can't um. If we can't require things to be over the the energy code because that's a state code.
Right.
But as you talk to folks, are there things that um you know, within the zoning ordinance and. And putting it in the master plan that you can um promote that type of um. Achieving the carbon.
So in your resolution, did you call out certain approaches to carbon neutrality, or you just said carbon neutrality? But did you say?
It it was a, it was, it, yeah, it was a goal of that aligned with the county goal, basically.
Right, but did you say aspects of carbon neutrality include um green roofs, uh electric cars? Okay, so what you might want to do then is in your master plan, be a little more specific about what you're thinking about. Because then you have a parking ordinance for your new development, then you can, and the communities have done this. They say X number of spaces uh reserved for electric cars. Um and that is, as long as you have a line of sight and a justification, you know, from your zoning to your master plan. It will probably withstand challenge. Um so that's one approach that you can do is just to be more specific. Uh another is um, and I'll talk about this in the next section, is if you have staff that is meeting with. Developers in the pre-development stage. You have a little script essentially for them, or you know, you've got the list of things that, well, you know, if you do these things, you know. Things may go quicker, or I mean, it's not, it's just. Alerting them to what the the feeling is in this community and. You know, encouraging them to be good citizens of the community with their new development by adopting these things. So maybe it's a handout that you give them saying, this is not zoning, but these are the things that we are hoping that you will consider. Uh in your development. Um so there's that. You can require, you know, green roofs, you can require, you know, certain things as long as it's tied to. You know. I'm thinking about maybe it's a bonus, if you get a little bit more of this, you can, you can provide a green roof, you can get a little more, I don't know. Reduction in parking, or you know, so- something that you are okay with, but you try to tie it with an incentive. So that's another approach.
So. One thing I've thought of is these subdivisions typically have grass lawns with sprinkler systems. It's really not environmentally friendly, so how could we incorporate something that says you can. Have alternative ground covers, for example.
Oh, so not the sprinkler system per se, but more the zero zero scape or whatever with low water.
Right, because. It exactly, because the sprinkler system is a consequence of having a lawn. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, working backwards, is the water coming from wells or is it coming from the the system? Oh, okay. If it's coming from the system, meters, money is one way to do it, you know, charge people extra money for having a. You know, rain system installed.
But I like the idea of getting in front of it before they make a decision. Say, we encourage. Uh what did you say, zero scapes?
Yeah.
To do it with, because we have our landscape ordinance, but in, when it's a subdivision. We really don't have any ordinances that.
As they're doing site condominiums typically, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah.
Um.
But that's where I think we could use it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That may be pre-education, okay.
How could you do that? You know, um you could certainly have standards for the common spaces within a site. Uh condo, and maybe that sends a message to the rest of the. You know, especially I imagine the places that are doing site condos, you're already saying, stay away from the wetlands. You know, preserve this fragment of woodland, you know. And maybe in the public spaces, you know, you need to use native vegetation and just say that. Uh the individual yards, I think that's kind of folly because people will do whatever they want once they have ownership right to that. Um although condominiums do have their condominium high laws.
Actually, we should extend it to commercial buildings as well.
It's easier to do.
I think that commercial are easier to do, and I had that kind of response when I was driving down um. Jackson the other day, and what's the brand new development, the really beautiful building? Buildings are going.
The auto dealerships.
I don't know what it's going to be.
The three.
Where, where is it?
Yeah.
Uh.
I'm sure it is.
So it's before you get to.
It's gotta be.
Before you get to Z.
So on the north side?
North side.
That's probably the.
Three dealerships. Yeah, and they're going to be doing all predominantly the native.
Okay, so it's hard to tell right now, but it seemed like from the way with the pavement that there was, there was going to be none of that.
They need perching.
Well, they need to display their vehicles.
Yeah, that's the.
And that's, I mean, I don't know.
But actually, once they come up, it'd be interesting to to see that because they did, it it has a lot of um. Uh landscaping and also uh twelve. Uh category three charging stations that are solar with battery.
Yeah, I mean, part of what you as a commission and board have to do is, you know, prioritize what it, what is it that we really want? Do we ask for everything? Do we ask for certain things and hope we can get some of this other stuff? Um but yeah, just communicating that through your development process. Uh I'll have some suggestions here about how you might do that.
Well, we don't have a problem asking, but but what's nice now than when I first got on the commission is that. More of this is coming on deck. In other words, we're we're having a new uh code. This new state code, it's going to require some of the things.
Oh, yeah.
We've been making suggestions to folks. Um so that that's nice because now, and then there's more builders seem to be aware.
But wouldn't it be great if you didn't have to do that at the meeting? I mean, wouldn't it be great if all of that was happening beforehand? So, you know. Guess that makes you feel like you're not doing your job, but I mean, or you would be doing your job, but.
Yeah.
Necessarily.
Pre-application process is the point to really um talk about those things and.
Yeah.
All right, so let's move on to that.
Thanks for that tidbit.
Uh thanks for that uh segue. So um now we're going to talk about the process, which is development review. So as a little bit of a refresher, uh there are two kinds of decisions when it comes to land use. There are legislative decisions which are made by elected officials, and those are um your zoning ordinance amendments, your map amendments. Uh any types of standards that need to be adopted on the part of the township. Um policy as well is set by that um that board. Administrative decisions don't establish broad policy. I mean, you might by your decisions kind of, you know, nudge people here and there, but you're not. You're not establishing policy, that's the board of trustees role. In the context of development review, you have, decisions have to be made based on ordinance requirements. So these are the non-discretionary decisions. So these are. X amount of land area, certain amount of height, the uses that are allowed. Um those are non-discretionary decisions, and um you are obligated to um follow those because they're they're law. Um but there are also decisions, uh administrative decisions that you all can make that require judgment. About compliance with certain standards. Um so these are discretionary standards. It might be something about, you know, um meet the spirit and intent of the master plan, or you know, something like that. You have to be careful with those discretionary standards that they do in fact track with. Whatever you're comparing with because lawsuits will, you know, take people out, say. You put too much discretion into that decision. So in development, there are lots of players. Um this is even an abbreviated uh version. But you have an applicant, it might be the owner, it might be someone who has a, you know, agreement to pursue a development proposal. You've got administrative staff, so you have people that are doing notice, people that are helping you with meeting notes or meeting minutes. Um you may have uh municipal staff that is doing reviews. So you had a planner on staff or an engineer, a a public safety person who's taking a look at the development. They uh review and comment on the proposal. You may have a planner or a consultant, and here I believe you do have a planning consultant that you work with, who also does review and comment on the plan. Um in some communities, that consultant or that planner may make the final decision, the administrative decision. Um you have citizens that may be providing comment if there's a public hearing, even if there's not a public hearing, they may be providing comment. Uh you as planning commissioners would review a plan. I understand you review the um preliminary plan, right? And you recommend to the board uh the approval of the prelim- preliminary plan, is that it? Or denial, either one. Um sometimes you could be the decision-making body, depending on how your code is set up. And then elected officials may make the final decision in some cases, uh definitely in the case of a rezoning or a text amendment. And the zoning board of appeals may be involved in here somewhere if, you know, something looks like it meets everything except. You know, the curb cut's not wide enough, or you know, the sign doesn't meet code. Um that could be part of the process as well, go to the ZBA for a variance. But in addition to all of that, there are other players that may be involved. Do you have a DDA? So do you have staff for the DDA, or does the township itself staff the DDA for Jackson Road?
Uh we don't.
No, there's no staff.
Yeah, there's no.
There's no staff, but someone oversees that.
The DDA. No, that's the only thing that is going on.
Um there may be historic.
Process.
There may be historic preservation. I know in Ann Arbor, we have historic districts, so we have kind of a separate set of regulation for that. Um for projects that go through um that review. Um maybe a construction board of appeals or an administrative hearing board. Uh maybe you have some uh derelict properties that need to be condemned or torn down. So that might be part of uh what's going on as a part of a development proposal. The health department, the road commission for sure, and the water resources commission. Um all have some role in a lot of your development proposals. So here is a very generalized uh review process, a little bit different from how you do it here, but. Um it could start with a pre-application conference. And then the applicant would turn in whatever plans and uh supporting material is required. That gets distributed to reviewing departments, reviewing agencies who. Uh loop back with comments, so someone looks at those comments and makes a decision whether um to postpone. Uh an item if it had been, you know, kind of tracked for a certain meeting. Uh they may make the decision to say, okay, there are enough uh questions out there that you need to submit revised plans. So that would go through another iteration, sometimes a third iteration, depending on how much um they have taken up. From the reviews. And then when it does go to the approving body, it can be approved uh just straight out approved, in which case. Uh it can uh proceed to permits and construction and inspection. It could be approved with conditions if there, uh I know sometimes maybe the water resources commission uh comments are still pending. Those are things that typically can be handled at construction stage, and so you might say, this is approved. Um you know, subject to the water resource commission signing off on it. Or it can be denied, and if a project is denied, there needs to be some findings. Uh stated by the approving body about why it's being denied, the more. Uh the more conversation that's recorded about that, the better, uh because if it does go to a lawsuit. Uh the courts will look at those documents for evidence. Um in some communities, I don't know, here, if uh someone is denied, can they go to the zoning board of appeals to have that overturned? If you're looking, if you're looking puzzled, then probably not. Yeah, it's not, it's not a best practice, but some communities say, if you're overturned, you could go to the ZBA, essentially getting a variance from the decision. It's not a good idea.
Yeah, you don't let government recommendation being good board trustees.
Yeah. But if the board of trustees turns it down, it could go to the ZBA.
No.
Um in some communities, but usually where it goes next would be sort of court.
Right.
So that tracks a little bit with your understanding of the process, okay? So um what is a site plan? We call this, I call it development review. Some people call it a site plan review. But a site plan specifically is a set of documents, maybe and drawings, maybe there's. Um photometric plans for lighting along with a, you know, topographic plan. Um you specify in your zoning ordinance or in your standards what information you want to be on that plan. And you want the information that's necessary to make sure that it meets all codes. So there's a balance there. You can ask for a ton of stuff, but if you're not really using it, then maybe you should strip back some of that. Make it more affordable to apply. Uh it should show existing and proposed features, any natural site characteristics that you identify in your code as being important. Wetlands would be an example. Um the proposal for the use and development of a parcel, although I would note that. Um if a building is being built and they say, we're gonna do retail here. They're not obligated to do retail because the zoning ordinance says how many um, and within that district, what uses may be allowed. But the building itself would be, they'd be obligated to build it as it's shown on the site. Uh ideally professionally prepared, uh certainly some smaller communities uh give more latitude to hand-drawn. Back-of-mat pen proposals. And then, once it's approved, it's called an entitlement. It's legally binding um to the um property owner, actually. Yeah, to the property owner, even if they have given someone else permission to move forward with this. Um and you're also required to follow that for however long it is valid. So a site plan is needed for certain requi- certain types of land use reviews, including special land uses. Land unit developments or PUDs and site condos or subdivisions. It's usually not required for single and two-family dwellings on individual lots. Um the gray area is kind of where you have single-family dwellings in a site condo. So that does require a site plan, but if you're just flooded lots or um meets and bounds lots where you're building a house. Typically, people or communities do not require that, typically not for accessory buildings either. Kind of the the middle point is some communities do require site plans for multiple family development. And non-residential development, um like commercial and industrial, that's probably a wise move, especially if you've got utility concerns. If you've got transportation concerns, um but you don't have to. Um the code or the enabling legislation does not require that. So um we went through, I went through the actors um about reviewing a site plan. You know, it varies, it can vary based on land use. So if you're really concerned about industrial um development because of aquifer concerns, maybe you have more. Uh a more strict uh review process, more steps in the process. Um but other uses you may not be as concerned about, so they have an easier process to get through. It might be that, for instance, if uh an existing um commercial use wants to do a small addition, you have a threshold. Or, okay, anything under, you know, five hundred square feet, we're not going to make you go through this whole process. You're just going to go to the zoning administrator and have that approved. So that's something you can think about and um fine-tuning your processes. It doesn't have to be, your triggers can be. You know, different approval processes that, you know, make more sense. So development review standards, I mentioned um that you have the ability to do um discretionary reviews. Uh review standards are used in conjunction with the regulations. And they are there to help make sure that the regulations are properly applied, um but they can't be a substitute for the regulations. Oh, and if all review standards are met, a site plan must be approved, and that is a tricky thing, I think, for a lot of, whether it's a planning commissioner or the board. There can be very unpopular projects that come through, but if they meet all the requirements, um including the development standards. Then they are obligated to be approved. So some review standards that are typical are things like um. Consistency with the master plan, which again can be a little mushy, um public safety. consistency with a master plan, which again can be a little mushy, um, public safety. So you may be able to turn something down because it's going to, it's a high crash intersection and the driveway is too close to the intersection. You may be able to have some discretion there. Um, protection of natural features. It really helps to have as descriptive as possible what you mean by natural features and what protection means in order for this to be a good, um, development review standard. Compatibility with surrounding uses, oh my gosh, that is a terrible one, but people have it, almost every ordinance has that in there. They, I mean, you could probably say any use is not compatible with surrounding uses, so be careful about that one. Um, make sure you articulate what you mean if that's the standard. And then the ability to provide adequate services is obviously a very important standard that needs to be met. So some smart practices, uh, simplify your requirements. So if there are things that you want, make it easier for those to be, um, to be built or added on to. Or, you know, make sure your review process reflects that. Our public, if public hearings aren't required, maybe you don't hold a public hearing. That is a controversy we're having in the city of Ann Arbor right now. You know, what information is required for review? Do you have to require a topographic survey at one foot intervals for everything? Or can you get away on a flat site with an existing building with a small addition with just doing some spot elevations? Now, it makes a difference to someone who is trying, especially if it's a local business that's been around for a while, in terms of not making them add more money to their investment by going through these processes. So shed requirements and donate values, what it, what that all means. Uh, you can expand your administrative review. I don't know if that's something that you've talked about, but allowing your zoning administrator or your planning consultant to approve developments, that you think don't need to go through this whole process. If you do that, you need to make sure that the person that you delegated that authority to really understands what the codes are. And then making those decisions transparent to the public, so they know all of a sudden there's construction, you know, right next door to them, and they're like, what happened? And that there's a place to go where they can see, you know, what is that project and what to expect.
Also, like, that they know what the, what the, what the direction of the township is. That's, that's kind of the downside to having it be one person. Whereas now we deal with that here and we, you know, some people know the history more than others. They've been around longer, so connecting useful sometimes.
But how does that relate to the ordinance standards and your discretionary standards? So yes, absolutely, I won't quibble with that at all. But that, that technically is not your role. Your role is to review that project to see if it meets the requirements of the, of the township. So.
But our role is also to honor the ordinances, the zoning ordinance. And sometimes they're gonna get, get into different kinds of, what the zoning.
Yeah, and so that would be, you know, where I said, um, the things to kind of earmark every year, you know, CBA variances and rezonance. If you have disagreements with your staff or your consultant, that would be also something to, you know, just kind of, all right, let's have a conversation with our consultant about these things. You know, maybe they can tell you, this ordinance, um, provision is unclear. It can be interpreted in many ways. So here are some ways that you could change that so that it's clear to, you know, address what you would bring to the table in your discussion of, uh, of a project.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think a lot of it is technical in nature, but my experience being on the planning commission is some of it is political. I mean, you can't techno, techno-crack politics out of the process. You just can't do it, but I understand.
Yeah, and I'm here just to tell you what, you know, what a generalized best practice or smart practice would be. You all have to take this all and figure out how it fits within your particular township. So, yeah, good point. So if you don't delegate authority, you need to make supportable decisions. You need to, um, have good documentation. I don't know what your minutes look like. I know that, uh, the state law just requires you to have really minimal minutes. So, um, you know.
They're pretty good now.
They're pretty, they're.
We have great minutes.
Nine, ten pages.
This meeting won't have. This meeting will have the required minutes. Well, and I found, even though, you know, legally you don't have to have the detail, if I am a citizen trying to understand something, I can go back and read those and go, okay, I understand, you know, where they're coming from. Or I disagree with what they're doing, but at least they have that information.
Yeah, we're providing that.
Good, good.
And you're recording.
And a recording helps too, although I will say a lot of people will not go back and listen to three hours worth of, you know, video, even at double speed.
The lawyers will.
Maybe. So you all know your plan and your codes. So, you know, you, a lot of that is as you, you learn as you go, right, as you see different projects. But that's an important way to make sure you have supportable decisions. And doing your homework, I assume you get staff reports from your consultant, so read your, read your staff reports. Make sure your motions are clear and that you have findings of fact that go along with your decisions. I'm sure your consultant has reinforced all of this. A delay only if necessary, but I'll talk a little bit later about when it's okay to delay. And make sure you know your bylaws. I can't tell you how many trainings I've done. I have talked to planning commissioners, they go, we have bylaws. Yes, we have bylaws, or you should. So, you know, make sure you know your bylaws. I mean, really, I don't know what your onboarding is for new planning commissioners, but certainly that's all part of, uh, an onboarding process. And then, of course, stand by your plan. So some communities, uh,
Just the beginning.
Provide a, a guide to development. So, um, this is, I mean, it could just be, your website is set up with a separate page that, you know, says, here's what our development process is, here are our contacts, who, who you need to get approval from. Ideally, it would, in addition to showing what the codes are, would link to your master plan, again reinforcing that this is what's behind all of this. A description of your approval processes, maybe some flow charts, uh, and of course a B schedule, if everyone wants to know how much it's gonna cost. So interestingly, um, one practice that you may want to think about is involving the applicant. And this is a little tricky because you have a reviewing board responsibility. You're not supposed to be, you know, pushing people to do things before they even submit. But then again, if you stick to things like communicating with the applicant, this is what the master plan says, this is what the zoning ordinance says, this is where our policies are, like we were talking about that little policy handout. You can meet with a, an applicant, um, maybe you have a working session and there's a really big project that's gonna have a lot of issues. Um, you can, as long as you're not deliberating and you're holding an open meeting, you can just sit and talk about the development. That's one way for the applicant to get a sense of, oh, you know, these are things we, we hadn't realized were hot buttons or, yeah.
You said open meeting, so could you tell me what, you tell us what you mean by that?
So open meeting would be that it's just advertised as available for the public to come in and listen?
It needs to be advertised.
Yes. Well, yeah, it's on your website and.
If, if there's a group of.
If there's. All of us there. Yeah, if you're there, you're not deliberating, so, you know, you don't necessarily.
Or we were thinking of the pre-application. Yeah, that isn't an open meeting.
Pardon me?
That isn't an open meeting, though.
I know, that's what she just said.
No, so your pre-app meeting, who usually attends that?
It, it would be one planning commissioner, typically, sometimes a trustee. Or the supervisor. And all the consultants.
So if it's just one, then you do not need an open meeting. That's just like a step.
Would you encourage that?
I don't know what goes on in your pre-app meetings. I mean, it's kind of meeting the same intent of giving the applicant some intel before they spend a lot of money and put together a proposal. So if that's working, that's great. But what it doesn't do is let the community know what's going on. So maybe there's a threshold, maybe projects over a certain number of units or, you know, a certain, uh, floor area. Maybe you make those as an open meeting and just kind of, uh, you know, just talk about what they think they wanna do and you talk about what the township is hoping for, what the master plan says. I would leave that for you to decide. But you can also encourage applicants, so this can be done through your pre-application meeting or with the consultant, um, to encourage them to let the neighbors know what's going on. You know, they're very hesitant to do that because they don't want people to start organizing in opposition in advance, but, um, it can help to start conversations.
Yeah.
Can you talk more about, um, how in, for example, our pre, pre-apps, the things that we can do, to encourage some of these likes that we want. Other than just our, you know, having our list that everybody, you know, that we could make up, that everybody on the planning commission agrees to.
Right.
You know, other than our, other than our little handout that would go, here, here, here's our wants, you know.
And some of that is your, your consultant, you know, put some of that on the consultant to communicate that. But, you know, the idea of having, so develop, developers are typically, applicants are time is money. They're in a situation where they wanna, you know, go as quickly as possible, so they'll nod their head and go, okay, okay. Um, but if they're in front of a group of people like you, it's a little harder for them to just say, oh, sure, I read that. You know, you are gonna be kind of, you know, they have to come before you and, and talk about their project. Maybe the public's gonna be there, so it puts a little more pressure on them to, to listen. Uh, that may not be, I mean, it does add time to the process. And so you'd have to see if you were to try something like that, whether, whether you're really netting the result that you were hoping for. But I would say there is some benefit to, you know, bringing them this, you know, to stand before you and justify their project.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna get four. What we've learned, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on the commission is at just. I'm sorry, what we've learned through the process is that some things we need to kind of flag for these developers. Instead of them coming into a public hearing or whatever, coming before the planning commission, hearing something for the first time.
Right.
Um, that's where the list got generated.
Right, and you can do that in your pre-application meetings, but this would be maybe for, like I say, projects that are larger, projects that have more impact. You know, if it's something that's going to be a. Yeah, size, uh, utilities as a hot button issue, you know, you may wanna bring them in and, you know, have that conversation.
So again, having built an office building, you know, for me, it was easy to come in and do our pre-app because, one, I already was there as far as building an aesthetically interesting building. I still vouch that it's probably the most interesting building here inside of Township. You know, that I would like to push on more, you know, here in SIO, that there's more, um, architecturally interesting buildings. And that I'd like, you know, to encourage. But then it was extremely easy for me because, well, I didn't push the boundaries, you know. So, you know, when you don't push the boundaries, then, you know, you're, yeah, there's no pushback from you all and it's just gonna go through.
So Laura, do you think that that's, cause we do some of that in our Jacksonville overlay. Sorry, we do some of that in our Jacksonville overlay, where we make record, no, none of these appliances on the roof should be showing and all that kind of stuff.
I think there could be some more.
So in that case, right, you might wanna incorporate more, um, design components to your code.
Absolutely, I think.
So that would be one thing.
There could be some more, um.
You know, and there is often.
Form, exactly.
A difference between a local developer and an outside developer in terms of, you know, what they might bring into the community. So you had a better sense of what the community would appreciate and, whereas someone who has a, a product, uh, always gets me, when they come in and talk about their product, um, you know, they have something that's already in design. And maybe they tweak it a little bit to fit the site, so that's a little harder. You know, one of the things you can do that's a little more intangible is you can do design awards, um, as a way to reward good design. Uh, and then have that, you know, again, if you're an outside developer, you may not pay attention. But maybe, you know, the word on the street is, if you wanna get through this process, you should incorporate, you know, some of these design features, uh, renewable energy, uh, whatever. So, you know, there are different ways other than regulatory ways to communicate that.
Yeah, and I think, well, one of the things, there have been some kind of wacky things that have come into a, a pre-app meeting that never go anywhere.
Yeah.
And, and you don't, you know, I think you wanna make sure that, you know, some of these wacky things don't start going out on next door when they're not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah.
It, it's sort of like, at what point, you know, do you want that engagement?
Do you have an example that can take it to our?
Didn't go anywhere.
That didn't go anywhere.
No, I mean.
I can think of a, a couple of.
Oh, storage units, storage businesses.
Yeah, and, uh, there was a one residential that was, it, it was, it, one, it wasn't, there were some zoning issues with the site, you know, that it, 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 just what they were planning was outrageous. So, y- y- you know, some of those things get stopped pretty quickly. And, and sometimes the pre-app meetings, you know, it's a pretty rough sketch. You know, some come in, you know, almost with their drawings done, but, uh, you know, some are very, very rough ideas. Just started, you know, kind of take the temperature, so it, it's a range.
And one of the things I mentioned here is, um, visualization tools now more and more are used. That, the, the danger to that is people can show a pretty picture, but then, you know, you're, you're approving the building envelope or, you know, the building structure, you're not approving everything with the skin on it, so you have to be really careful about that.
A couple of wild things, um.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if I'm. You could use.
Example.
Yeah, and you could use, in Ann Arbor, we use, uh, development agreements to lock some of that in. That isn't.
Yeah, well, we do those just with the PUDs.
Right, but you, you can do them.
I think there's plenty of opportunity to use it more, is my point.
The, the flip side to that is you still need someone to enforce it, and so, you know.
Well, thankfully we have a new enforcement officer.
Okay, alright. Alright, um, so another smart practice is staff support. You already provide staff support in the form of a consultant. Uh, but it sounds like maybe, did you just hire someone to do zoning administration or what?
Uh, no, just, uh, enforcement.
Oh, enforcement, code enforcement, great. So, um, this staff support, you know, these are usually the first line of contact. So, you know, a clear submission checklist and an approval flow chart, maybe if you have that development manual, that's something that you give folks. Um, pre-submission meetings, you already talked about that. Make sure that revisions, when the plan goes through, that the revisions are clearly communicated. Sometimes, um, some departments might be a little obscure in their comments, so it helps to have a staff person interpret those and, you know, clarify them potentially. And make sure that there's a staff report template that, or profit, that provides you all with the information that you need as well as the public. Okay, so I say it's time to stretch. Are we doing okay on time?
Okay. Just, just a quick stretch.
So why?
You are very attentive, um, this is, I hope not to make it. Really long, but there are a couple of pieces that I wanna finish out our books. Okay, so we talked about public comment, let's talk about that a little bit. So, you know, there's a difference between public meetings and public hearings. So, um, all planning commission business must be at a public meeting, we're at a public meeting right now, it's advertised, it's open to the public. Some business requires a public hearing. Under state law, so the things that need, uh, public hearing under state law are rezonings and zoning ordinance text amendments. Since, uh, the board of trustees is who approves that, that's where the public hearings have to be. But because you are a recommend recommending body, you should also have public hearings. Special land uses require public hearings, and so those are, are those adopted by, or approved by a planning commission or by the board of trustees?
Well, it, it's all approved by the board of trustees. But we make the recommendations.
Okay, so public hearing required for that, planning unit developments we talked about, and then the master plan adoption. So, all of those require public hearings and that is advertised in a newspaper or whatever, you know. Uh, on the website, notices are often sent to residents and property owners within three hundred feet, but those are usually the. The notices that are sent for development, but, uh, you know, if it's a rezoning of a particular property, that three hundred foot. Rule has been around since, I think, the forties. So, you know, that is something that you are obligated to do. But why do we have public hearings? It all goes back to the state standard zoning enabling act. I think I have, on my notes, I had the, the date, but it's something like the nineteen thirties, right? So, for the longest time, this is how we got public comment. Now we have lots and lots of other tools, but we still have this vestige of public hearings. And they're very well understood by citizens, and so that's why it would be difficult, like it's being proposed in Ann Arbor. To move away from public hearings in certain cases because people understand that that's how they can have their voice heard. So, thinking about public hearings, you know, are there better ways to engage the public? So, um, a smart practice is to create a community engagement plan. And the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's redevelopment-ready communities. That's one of the requirements to be an RRC certified community is a community engagement plan. That is also updated on a regular basis, so what that plan does is it, um. Identify some stakeholders by groups, not by names, but you know, key, uh, groups within the community. Uh, in, including those that normally aren't at the table. Uh, it describes some public participation methods that you feel comfortable with, maybe it's surveys, maybe it's focus groups. Um, and then it talks about the venues for each, so Township Hall, you know, is actually, you know, ADA accessible. Has all of these other, it's got a listening device, I see, device I see, so this is probably a great place. But, you know, maybe there are other places within the township that would be good for maybe smaller meetings. It details what engagement techniques you're gonna be using for your development proposals, so how can people have input on development? Um, maybe that is a public hearing, maybe that's letters to the board, um, maybe you have a website that lists. Um, the development that's being proposed. It includes traditional and proactive methods and how results will be reported out, where should people look to find out what the results are for decisions? And it gets reviewed periodically, maybe every year, maybe every couple of years. And, um, if the planning commission is doing this, you could then. Communicate to the board of trustees what the results are when you look at it every couple of years. So here's an example, a little blurry, um, from the city of Holland from their, uh, uh, community engagement plan. So what they've done on this matrix is they've listed on the, uh, left-hand column. The types of meetings that they do, like a pre-application meeting, one-on-one interviews, um, community workshops or open houses. And a public hearing at the bottom. And then in the top, they've listed the types of activities that the planning commission is typically involved with, so. The master plan zoning amendments, your capital improvements plan, planning, parks and recreation planning and any type of major development. So, this matrix talks about what, at least in the city of Holland, they are thinking needs to be done for each of those types of, uh, applications. Uh, and what tool to use.
Well, I have a question, I know, uh, it, I'm not sure if they still do, but. In our, our work, there were, depending on the size of the development, it was, uh, the developer. Should actually meet with.
A community participation meeting, so yes, the developer was responsible.
That, it has that worked, do you, what, what?
Honestly, I haven't seen an evaluation, I think that developers that really are sincerely interested in, you know. Making their project a benefit to the community, do listen and make adjustments as needed. Um, others that are just looking to, you know, transact business and get their product in place. You know, they go through the motions and, you know, they, they, they stick to the codes. But yes, that is one possibility, uh, requiring developers to present to their proposal before it comes before you. So, um, smart practice is to make sure that, uh, the community is informed. I've talked about this already about transparency. Um, public notices with plain language, that's something in government that we are constantly needing to remember. Is that we need to be plain in our language and explain what needed, uh, where to go for information. Provide a variety of pre-hearing opportunities, so that would be one, the pre-submission meeting for applicants. It could be that you have something on your municipal website, if you have, um, do you have something like, uh, a subscription service? Where people can sign up to get information like about. Projects.
Yeah, we do.
A lot of, a lot of cities have moved to that where, you know, like if you are interested in a construction project on your street. You know, you can sign up to get updates, or if you're interested in, um, what's happening in your parks. You can set, sign up for that subscription service, so you can also do that about development as a way to let people know what is being proposed. Um, you can have plans here at your municipal building or libraries, I love libraries. Libraries are a great place to capture people and provide resources to them, so. Well, but aren't you part of the, um, the Dexter Library Department?
Dexter Schools taxes, so I imagine I can join the Dexter Library.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so you're paying for your library, so, I mean, they are great sources. You will find people that go to the library that will never go to a public meeting, so, you know, think about that. And then consider inviting behind, be on the three hundred foot list. I did this presentation a couple of weeks ago and someone came up to me and said, I can't do that, I'm a clerk, I have to do what it says. But, um, so I suggested what you could do is you could keep a list of others interested in planning. So that could be the, you know, the Kiwanis, it could be the, you know, the auto dealership, uh, group. Uh, it could be, you know, a whole bunch of people that are integral to the township. That you, you know, when you send out a public notice, you send it to them too. Uh, all it is is an email, so it really, you know, once you have that list in place.
What gets the public sometimes is that there'll be a, a subdivision next door. You know, uh, adjacent, but only some of the houses.
Right, that's why we suggest maybe you.
Across the street, they don't get to hear about it, but.
I hate to keep saying Ann Arbor, but that's what I know, um, we had a list of neighborhood associations. And so those neighborhood associations got the notice, now it was on them to distribute it to their, you know, the residents. Um, there was just a call put out, um, I got it on my subscription service, uh, last week. To say if you have a neighborhood association and it's not registered, come register. And if it's changed the, you know, the contact person, you know, we will update our records too, so that's another thing that you could do. Uh, better public meetings, uh, you know, making sure people can see images on the screen or on a set of plans. You already do, uh, online and video, so that's great, I don't know if you allow comment by phone. Potentially, you know, some communities have been doing that. So that, that is by, by phone, yep. Uh, make sure you advertise ADA accommodations, um, to make a welcoming environment. Think about providing a comment form on your website. So, you know, you get letters from people, maybe it might be easier for whoever's assembling those to have a place where people can just. You know, a fillable form on the website for, you know, various projects. You also may wanna do, uh, a handout that has public hearing ground rules. And is, and you, you put it on chairs or, you know, at the door that say, you know, all communication goes through the chair. You know, we'd really love to respond to you in public comment, but we can't, you know, maybe, you know, educating folks. As you go along to the protocol of a meeting like this. Um, so that demystifies things a bit. And then, uh, this is a hard one, compile a comprehensive written response to comments. I don't know how many places have the staff ability to do that, but maybe. On more controversial ones or larger projects, maybe that is something, you know, that you take on. But, yeah, I don't have to do this, I just have to tell you. Uh, comments or questions on engagement?
I guess it would be helpful if you had the one example from Holland, I'd, I'd be really interested in. Um, some other community engagement plans, cause I think that's one of the issues that Syo has. One, I think we need to compile some of these, you know, registered lists and so forth, but. Um, I've found, a- and, and Jackson Road is a, it, um, just some of the things that. They've done, there's the survey, but also we're doing, trying to do some pop-ups, you know, in, in, in some key areas. And, um, we're just trying to think of other ways of engaging people because to get. Uh, we have a, a certain engagement, but how do you reach those, like you said, who don't typically have a voice, so, or maybe haven't. Connected with the township, and I think that's a healthier, uh, environment when people feel like they have a connection to their.
Maybe you have a table at the, what is the, it's not the Dream Cruise, what do you call it? The cruise. You know, you, you, the challenge there is you're not necessarily going to get Syo Township residents completely. But maybe you have a table that talks about, um, you know, Jackson Road and, you know, what the aspirations are. People can maybe put little sticky notes up and say, yeah, this is what I'd like to see, and, you know, just so there's low. Um, stress in terms of providing, you know, it's not like there's a project and they're responding to it, it's just like getting their ideas. Um, and so doing things and events that are already there, you know, saves you a little time and money. You just need someone to staff something like that. Yeah, so what I was gonna.
Like the biggest event that the township actually has is the, um, Halloween open house.
That's true. And now the sustainability.
And then the sustainability, yeah.
So, uh, Jan, the redevelopment-ready communities, M A D C has put together this amazing library. So I think if you just Google, you know, RRC library, um, for all of their, um, best practices, they have examples. So there are probably five or six of the community engagement plans there on the website that you can pull from. Okay, being development ready, uh, as I mentioned, this was, you know, presented in the U P where they want development. You may not want as much, but, um, so.
We just want the right kind, right?
Well, and that's it, so, you know, this first one, uh, comment is communicate the value of new development, so. Remember, you know, it's, it's hard sometimes when people are so upset about development, to remember that, um. Communities that have no new development have all sorts of problems. So, you know, it's kind of like parking, if you have a parking problem, that means probably economically you're doing okay. In, in a, a certain, you know, commercial district. So, you need to help remember that and remind the public, you know, potentially that the house that they, I mean, you do it in a nice way. But the house that they're living in was built by a developer, more than likely, um, there may be some farmers in there that, you know, built their, their home, but, um. You know, we all benefit from development in some way, shape or form. So I mentioned earlier, maybe you showcase some successes that you have in the community that you really love. You know, that you worked hard to get, like this new development, um, maybe your, your building, your office building, Laura, you can. They can highlight that, um, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but it would help. For maybe you all to educate yourself if you aren't already educated on what a performer is and understanding what goes into development. Um, you know, it isn't just a bunch of people wanting to, you know, cause problems, uh, in your neighborhood. There are people that have looked at, you know, investments and, you know, um, have a, something that they want to bring to the community. Um, but they have land costs, utility costs, construction costs, um, you know, design costs. All of those add up, so understanding that and how that all fits together. And maybe help you understand, you know, what they're going through, looking at it from their side and seeing, you know, how you can make it. So that the people that really do understand what you want can get through the process and, and build what they, they wanna build. Part of that is this idea of pushing back on the greedy developers piece, um, that, that. Kind of a victim, or demonization of developers really doesn't help much, uh. So, I don't, I don't think that happens here, but I've seen it happen elsewhere and.
We're aware of that. I've seen it here.
Just think of them as, you know, toddlers that you need to redirect. In cases where, you know, they're not aligning with your, your ideas. Ultimately, we are in control. Kind of, yeah, to an degree, to an degree, yes.
I think what happens in my experience is that, um. I think what happens in my experience is that, um. Developers wanna just give you what they need to move on to the next level. Sometimes we're thinking about. A holistic view of the project, for lack of a better descriptive phrase, and, and, um. So, and I think, you know, and how we interface with the board on these projects too, they want us to. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jan, they want us to flush out. As much as we can during our process with the developer. So that they, they believe, and I don't know if this is true or not, and that's certainly in my case, they believe we have more of a. So that they they believe, and I don't know if this is true or not, and that certainly in my case, they believe we have more of expertise.
Well, you do. I mean, you're appointed because you have, you bring to bear certain skills in the community.
Right.
But.
So if you don't know the right, if you don't have the right question to ask the developer, um, you're out of luck with that. But um, we got a snafu with, we we thought it was clear what we wanted. Uh, this uh, these outlets, Meyer outlets, and we we wanted this developer to put in um EV chargers. Well, I'll take him at his word. They they ran into some problem with Edison about the EV chargers. But the problem was is they came back to us after the project was done. And they were, they were selling salads. And so we, as a commission, felt a little bit um.
Some of that is your enforcement and your construction process. Because um ideally at your construction process, in addition to reviewing the construction drawings for the building code, they are reviewing the improvements for the site that were shown on the site plan.
Yes, they do all on the county because our, the county and Lauren.
Well, now we have a project manager. Before we didn't.
Well, except I think with that one, what happened was it was put on the site plan, but nobody integrated it with the um, construction documents. So what happened was the site plan showed it, but nobody updated the um panel, electric panel and the wiring diagrams in the construction documents. And it was there. It, you know, they had already ordered the panel and so forth. And so they got into a snafu. It was their fault.
Yeah, and so.
Yeah, because they didn't follow up on it until at the conclusion of the.
Yeah, and then that's not uncommon. So um, you know, just trying to tighten the um, the the holes, I guess, in the construction and implementation process would help with that. You can also do development agreements. And again, you know, we talked about that a little bit earlier is, you know, it still requires someone to make, do the checklist to make sure that you're doing. But um, you know.
Yeah.
You can hold them to, if they have not provided what's shown on the site plan, they either have to change the site plan or they don't get their certificate of occupancy, which means that they can't.
Your bathroom isn't ADA compliant, you're not gonna get your C of O.
Right.
Looking back on it, the only reason we found out about it is because they had one agreement to do to develop another part outlet.
No, it was when they, when they went through the zoning compliance at the end.
At the end.
Right, yeah, and that that is, it's tricky. All right, so another thing to think about, this is really more for communities that are trying to prevent new housing or prevent development because they're afraid that um, the changes will devalue their property. Uh, just know that almost every study that's been done out there shows that um housing, even affordable housing, does not devalue property, adjoining properties. So if anyone needs the studies, we have them. We at MAP, we've been doing a lot of work on zoning reform for housing to try to encourage communities to think about um, housing other than single-family uh dwellings to increase their housing supply. So. Uh, you know, a smart practice is to know the project and I think you all, you know, you have your staff reports. But, you know, knowing the data in the plan, uh, the data in the application, your submittal, um, the staff report, you know, having all of that at hand. It's a lot easier for you to either communicate to the applicant what's missing or to communicate to the public why it is that it's being approved. So, you know, essentially, no, do your homework. Um, support local developers. Uh, this is um, you know, for the most part, the, I think there's a sense that local developers are more attuned to uh what, you know, the developer should provide. Um, so ways to do that is to do by right development. So, you know, for smaller projects, projects, I mean, you can't really just differentiate between, you know, the McDonald's and the, you know, the local restaurant by the person. But there are ways you can differentiate in terms of, you know, the type of development. So, you know, making sure that the things that you want go through more quickly, um, more seamlessly through the process. And maybe that's less expensive as well. Uh, counter assistance and ombuds person, someone who does some handholding, especially for people who aren't used to doing development. Um, we just went through at MAP uh going through childcare regulations and there are so many communities that regulate childcare that um, you know, there's a real need for someone who's a daycare provider wanting to do, you know, provide a service that's needed by the community to kind of help them understand what the requirements are. So uh, you could do that as well with development proposals, streamlining the approval process. Um, small developer training and education, if that is a a goal of your community. There are lots of people out there that are doing training to um encourage small developers to invest in the community. And then pre-approved plans. Uh, this is a relatively new thing. The Michigan Municipal League has a uh, oh, now I forgot what the name of it is, but they have a book of designs that are basically well-accepted by communities that um they have the construction drawings all ready to go. So you could, um, if you decided to do something like this, you could say, for infill development, you could say, if you use one of these plans, you just need the um building official to sign off, but otherwise it's good to go. And so um, Kalamazoo has been doing this, City of E Course has started doing this. So, and these are communities that are really, you know, hungry for housing, may have planted lands that um are um, going to have demolition or are vacant. So that may not be relevant to you, but then again, you may, you know, may find places where it would make sense to add housing um, as long as it meets these plans. And the nice thing about the pre-approved plans are there are things that people like. You know, they're, they're uh acceptable in terms of their design.
We could choose from those plans, ones that we agree on.
Yeah, it was kind of like going to a developer of a subdivision and they usually have what, four, four floor plans? And you can pick the brick on the outside or the, you know, um, it's a little bit like that. Um, but the nice thing about it is it's already been through building code review. So that shortens the timeframe and the amount of money. You don't have to create these construction drawings. Um, and then a smart practice is to stand by your plan, know what it says and the reasons that it says these things. Um, so I think, I don't think you have a problem with that. Some communities, you know, don't know their plans and so. Um, but really make sure that that is a document that you rely on and keep it fresh. So uh, final parting comment is that change is inevitable, right? Um, I, you know, I myself am dealing with this in my neighborhood. Uh, it's, it's hard sometimes because you have moved to a place maybe because you really love it and you really love what it provides, and then it goes and changes on you, you know. Or, you know, there's a possibility of change. That can make you feel a sense of loss. And so when people come to you with concerns, maybe, you know, um, think about that, that maybe that's what's going on in their head and trying to be sensitive to that. But change is inevitable. We know that. And so uh, your role as planning commissioners and I guess as the township or trustees is to think about the future. Um, think about what the community will need, not just now, but uh twenty years from now or ten years from now. And so that is your special role. Uh, and that's why you are in charge of the master plan. So, that's it.
Right.
Hopefully it gives you some food for thought. Um, and then, you know, as members of MAP, if you have questions, you know, feel free to call us and ask us questions and. But you also have a very uh good planning consultant that can also answer your questions if you have follow-up from this.
I was wondering, Wendy, I know you brought up this TIF idea, which is an intriguing. But are there other ways that we can uh think of promoting the kind of things we'd like to have along Jackson Road? I suppose that's, that could be in other areas of the township as well.
I mean, you know, I mentioned, um, so you can provide incentives. Uh, you can um do pop-ups and do that type of thing. Uh, you can do a design competition. Is there a piece of land that's publicly owned that, no, not along the corridor? All right.
But yeah, it's seven people.
Yeah, that's what some communities do. They'll do a design competition as a way to get enthusiasm and um some ideas flowing. You can have, so does the DDA has a advisory board? Do they regularly talk about these types of issues or could you create a focus group? Just a one-time focus group to solicit ideas from, you know, either property owners along the corridor or a mix of people from the township just to, you know, throw ideas out there. What you're trying to do, it sounds like, is kind of get some uh excitement, right? Uh, so we can do that with events, you can do that with money, you can do that with talking to people. And you have the uh, the grants, the Senpai grant. So that's going to be getting people thinking about, yeah.
That's a, that's a good start. And and we did do a, a, a kind of a a group. It wasn't an outside group. It was planning commissioners and trustees.
And DDA and, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I wanna just give, uh, is there anyone um online that has a question for Wendy? We will do formal, yeah, Rob, go ahead.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, SIO Township President. Thank you for that presentation, Wendy. It's um, it was hugely informative and very overwhelming.
Sorry.
No, no, no worries. This is perfect. Um, in in communities that you've uh talked to in the past few years, how, what percentage would you guess have planning, zoning and engineering in-house and how many use outside consultants?
Well, there's probably a sweet spot in terms of population. Um, you know, certainly there are townships that have uh staff in all of those areas, but they're larger townships. So Canton Township. So the smaller communities almost all use consultants for planning and some, I should say, planning staff. Uh, the really small communities usually uh empower their zoning administrator who does code enforcement, zoning administration and planning um to do a lot of these tasks uh in some of the smaller communities.
Thank you for that. Uh, a lot of what you were talking about, it seemed if we were to hyper-focus on SIO Township for a lot of these ideas and and growth in our, in our uh process would require trying to do a lot of that in-house. That asking our consultant to do a lot of these focused on SIO things would be difficult to do. Do you find that in your experience?
Um, you know, it really depends. Every community has a different um commitment, I guess, to planning. So the ones that find it to be valuable spend money to either hire consultants or um hire staff. So, I mean, I, it's hard, as I know, the township form of government, uh, there is a strong sentiment to try to keep taxes low. So that is kind of, you know, pulls against doing something like that. But the townships that have grown and have grown in a planned way have invested in that kind of staff. So um, and you know, so maybe it's just a tipping point too, that as as places grow, they suddenly reach a point where they they need that assistance. They need to have someone in-house to do that. But yeah, I can't, I wouldn't, I don't know enough about um SIO to really figure out what is the magic for you all, the magic sauce, the secret sauce for you all.
Fair enough. I think SIO Township might be approaching that point where it might actually be uh more economical for us to bring in in-house because we are spending so much with our consultants. So that might be both an advantage in terms of hyper focusing on SIO and lowering costs. Uh, the Planning Commission Report, a yearly Planning Commission Report is a very good idea. Jan, have we ever had one sort of as comprehensive as that one she suggested?
No.
Okay, um, I I really liked that. That was, because that guided future years, because we can look back at past years. Um, and then you talked about uh Planning Commission for final site approval, rather than it going to the board that it could uh be done by the Planning Commission. What are the pros and cons of having the Planning Commission doing final site approval before it goes to the board for final approval?
Well, I think it harkens back to um, site plan approval is an administrative function. And so the Planning Commission has the ability to do administrative decisions. Whereas the elected board is a legislative board and they can do both. Um, so it's really just a matter of, you know, maybe streamlining the process. Um, that that is typically why it's being suggested now, to move the process to where it belongs.
One thing, we we just had a, an example of many hands where um it would have been, I think, very beneficial for many hands to have gone through the Planning Commission process before it got to the Board of Trustees because it was asking the Board of Trustees to do a lot more research than they are normally tasked with. And the the specific ability of the Planning Commission, it seems to me, would um be more appropriate there and more effective there because they're gonna know what the final site plan requirements are gonna be much better than the the Board of Trustees who have so many more duties. And then my last question is, can we put the presentation into the agenda?
The presentation is posted.
Oh.
Yes.
Uh, is it, is it in the agenda packet or is it a separate post on the website?
It's just in the, it, there, I don't think there is, it, it, if you go into agenda, it's all in one.
Yeah, it's all in one.
Ah, okay, I missed that. Thank you very much. Very well done. Thank you for including us.
Okay, thanks. Uh, David, go ahead.
Yes, hi, David Reed, um Township President and trustee, SIO Township trustee as well. Thank you, Wendy, for the presentation. Very informative. But um, I wanted to ask while I was in the room, but I didn't, there was no, never an opportunity to really break in and ask this question. When you were talking about incentives for um green building, green roofs, um native plantings, that type of thing. Is it appropriate, and I'm not sure anybody in the room can answer this question, but is it uh possible or appropriate that the township could offer tax incentives? In other words, uh, reduce the township part of the um winter or summer tax, well, winter taxes um, in exchange for uh certain green building practices? Is is that something, I mean, if federal government does that, is that something we could do?
Lots of communities do tax abatements, but it's kind of, it's separate from the zoning. A tax abatement is something that, you know, uh, is negotiated between a developer and the the jurisdiction. So um, it wouldn't be tied to the zoning. Uh, but it could result in the things that you're talking about. But that, you know, typically tax abatements have been used to um get people to come to provide jobs. So provide jobs or, you know, kind of an investment like upfront will reduce your taxes, but will get you to, um, you know, will have more property taxes in the meantime because of development around. Or it could be that the site is contaminated and so, you know, you get um these brownfield uh incentives to clean up the site. So I would say that probably not with zoning. I've not ever heard of those two being put together.
We we could do greenfield incentives.
There you go. You can be the first.
Green bill, green building incentives. We wanna keep the green fields. Thank you, David. Uh, anyone else online that would like to ask a question? Okay. Uh, thank you so much. Oh, did you want?
I just wanna make one comment. For me, the key takeaway was one of the first slides, which was the secret of getting what you want is knowing what you want.
Yeah.
I think the rest are tools help get you there, but the time-consuming part is figuring out what you want.
Right, and then getting everyone to agree on it.
That's all, yeah, that's the whole big picture is, once you've got agreement, then it's just, okay, which tool is the best way? And how do we use our tools to get us there?
Right.
But figuring out what we want.
And the collective view.
In in collective view, yes, is is the toughest part.
To be honest with you, you never do get everyone to agree, right?
No.
So, but if you get a a ground swell of people that agree, then you're on the right track. Okay, thank you. This has been really fun. I appreciate your.
The meeting said something about MAP's planning toolkit and that it's a good thing for new planning commissioner toolkit. So a lot of what I talked about today in terms of what the state enabler. Planning commissioner toolkit. So a lot of what I talked about today in terms of what the state enabling at legislation says and what your roles are. Right, that's kind of tabbed and it's got different sections. Can that be emailed?
No, it's a hard copybook.
I think we have a copy.
You might have it in your library. But if you don't. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For remembering that.
Alright, um, I'm gonna, uh, we'll officially open public comment. And if anyone wants to address the Planning Commission on anything, any other banners? Now, uh, we have no public hearings, we have uh no unfinished business, the new business. At the end of the presentation in the packet, um, we just re, we received an invitation from the county. The County Resilience Office. And they, they have a grant and some funding to help develop a template for renewable energy. And uh, they're very interested in SIO um participating in that. Basically, eat, there, the, the little survey that you fill out is, um, you know, if you want. I- if you're interested in solar, wind, geo. And at what scale, um, if you will. And I think we're, so the question is, one, do we want to participate? It's, you know, some meetings and um some dialogue, and who would we want to um include in that? Participation. The first meeting is April tenth on Zoom. And then, uh, so they do have some resources that could help with that. Obviously, we're pretty far along with our accessory use, but um, you know, anything that is not accessory of principal use. You know, we've been, uh, so we've sort of been delaying and there isn't any. Real deadline that we need because they haven't passed the community solar legislation yet. So we have time. It's just a matter of, are we interested in collaborating um with the, with the county and probably some other townships? Or cities who would be interested in this.
It'd be great, I do.
I guess I would put a different, why wouldn't we want to? It was when you said we're volunteers essentially. Why recreate the wheel if you can work with others to do it?
Alright, well, then I'll, I'll take that as a consensus and are there um, you know, some commissioners that would. Um, be interested in participating?
So what, what would the participation be?
It'd be meeting there, it sounds like they're going to do a lot of those meetings on Zoom. One is, they're just trying to figure out who's interested in what's, what people are interested in. I think for sure the solar and the wind, you know, above accessory use or larger than accessory use. I'm not sure, I don't, uh, to me, geo is. It's permitted by the county, it's underground. I don't know if we'd want an ordinance that. Restricted it or governed it in any other way, other than promoting it, maybe. And then I think the other one was, um, uh, you know, the accessory use, how we have dealt with that. I think we've done, we've probably discussed that. It's more the larger stuff that. Have more um need for, I think. If other people agree with that.
So what was the, you mentioned a grant.
I, they have some funding to have some expertise involved in it, that, yeah. And that's good for me. So are there people that would want to, I, I'm thinking if a couple of us or maybe three of us, um, you know, participated. Yeah, it's for a Zoom meeting.
I find that I'm signed up for a, a Michigan Solar for All listening session. At six o'clock that same day. Are you on that?
I'm, I'm not, I'm actually going to be um out of town, but. I mean, if people wanted to, uh, it's a Zoom meeting, you know, anybody who wanted to, I can dispo the invitation. And that would allow us to understand a little bit more about what they're.
If you sign up, then they get, even if you can't attend, you get notification of the recordings.
If they record it. Maybe? Okay, okay, we'll send it and then we can decide, you know, obviously it'd be nice to have some consistent people that would be spearheading it. Okay, great. Then um I'll go ahead and say yes and. Alright. Move back and open public comment again. Anyone else that has any additional comments? Alright, seeing none.
Move to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, say goodbye. H crew. Alright, um, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, and are adjourned at seven fifteen. Thank you, everyone.